Good evening, everyone. We'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, August 24th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few opening remarks before we get started. First, I would like to thank and welcome the City Councilors back to the chamber after a five-month absence. It is great to have you back here in the chambers. Reminder, City Hall is only open from 9:00 to 5:00, so public participation will still be via remote access. City Councilors have the option to participate remotely as well. The public will note that the chamber has been reorganized to comply with the Governor's social distancing policy of six feet of separation. As in the past, this evening's meeting will be a little different. We'll be implementing the Governor's executive order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows councilors to participate remotely, and councilors now also have the option to attend in person. All the councilors are present, and we will conduct a roll call shortly to confirm their attendance. Councilors have been asked to review the agenda items before the meeting and contact the mayor or department heads to obtain answers to their questions prior to the meeting so this meeting can be conducted efficiently. All votes, even though we're in the chamber, will be via roll call vote, so everything's still going to continue to be a roll call vote. The mayor is available, should he be needed, to address any council questions. The council will be conducting a public hearing this evening with public participating remotely. We will try to make this as seamless as possible and ask for your cooperation and patience as we all work through this together. I will discuss this further before we start the public hearing. I ask the members of the public that are participating to keep their computers and phones on mute until the public meeting portion of the agenda starts. We have 30 items on this evening's agenda. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
And Counselor Robey.
Counselor Robey is present.
I'm present, sir.
Thank you. So all the councilors are present, and it is nice to look out and see councilors. I will say that. So I will now ask the city clerk to read Agenda Item Number One, please.
Minutes to the City Council meeting, July 20th, 2020.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
Accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Robey.
Counselor Robey votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Excuse me. Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
And Counselor Osing.
Counselor Osing votes yes.
11 yes, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved 11-0. Agenda item number two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 540 Solid Waste, making changes to the resident drop-off facility operations and associated fees. Order number 20-108042A.
Thanks. So as I mentioned earlier, the City Council will make this public hearing as seamless as possible and ask for your cooperation and patience. Some reminders: Please keep your computers and phones muted when not speaking. Unmute to speak and mute when finished speaking. If calling in via the phone, you can unmute by pressing star 6. Just like if the public was in the chambers, please be respectful while waiting for the public hearing to start as the council needs to conduct its business. The system does not work when everyone tries to speak at once. We will do our best so that each individual has the opportunity to speak, so please be patient. Do not watch the meeting on TV. There is a time delay. Your remote access capability is real time. Should there be a technical issue, we will recess and determine if we can get it corrected. Our IT department will monitor the system for any issues and will remove any individuals who are disrupting the meeting. At the conclusion of the public meetings, the council will recess and the system will be cleared of participants, and then the council will continue with the remainder of the agenda. Okay, so as a reminder, this public hearing will be conducted in four stages: Public Speaking in Favor, Questions from the Public, Public Speaking in Opposition, and then Questions from the City Councilors. So with that, Public Speaking in Favor, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ted Scott from 64 Benjamin Road in Marlboro. I'm the interim commissioner for Public Works. So we had the presentation last time, and I think that worked out really well. Had a lot of great questions from the councilors. I think that was a lot of information there. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights again. So for the proposed changes, the recycling at no cost will not change. Senior citizen and disabled American veterans at no cost will not change. The only difference is we're imposing a 50-bag household trash limit and four pay items per year. And senior citizens are only 65 and older now. We're eliminating that reduced rate from 62 to 65. There's no increase to the standard $50 fee, but there will be limits on that $50 fee, which is 50 bags of household trash and six pay items per year. And then sticker upgrades will be in $100 increments for each additional four pay items. And pay items are electronics, like TVs, appliances, and bulk waste, which is material that can't go in the bag, which goes in the bulk containers. 12 additional bags of household trash will be considered one pay item. And demolition materials will no longer be accepted. So with those proposed changes, if we look at last year's data of how that will affect people going forward, you'll see 71% of people will experience no change. That means they're either under the $50 sticker or they are still free like a senior. 26% will pay an additional $100, and then 3% will pay more depending on how much they dump. Those are the people that dump way in excess of everybody else. And for those of you who like pie charts, that's what it looks like in a pie chart. The value to residents, the resident drop-off fee structure yields a $200 per year value to every user. This is in addition to the $275 per year value achieved for residents with the Curb Side program. The current sticker of $50 for resident drop-off has not been increased since 1996. And you can take a look at what the current fees for some of the surrounding towns. South Bros' drop-off sticker is 250. Sudbury's is 170, but then you're paying 240 a bag and such, and they charge for recycling. West Bros. 160. You can keep going down. Hudson is $10, but then you pay for everything. And you could see Hudson's values are pretty much in line with ours, but we're giving you the $200 value to start. And then it got brought up last time, what's going to happen if people run out of bulk items? You always have, this is Republic's, it's on the DPW website, and we'll publicize this again. This is stuff Republic, who picks up our trash, will pick up at the curb. If you're looking at appliances, you can pay roughly $31 for an appliance that has Free On, like an air conditioner or a refrigerator. They'll pick it up right on your curb. So you call them, set it up, and they come. Same thing with TVs, large bulk items like love seats, any furniture. You don't have to borrow someone's truck. You just call them, put it on the side of the road, and they pick it up. So that's another option that Marlboro supplies. And we'll put this out. It is on our website, but we'll publicize this more when we go for everything. When the new sticker comes out, we'll publicize all that, too. And then part of the new regulations, some of the comments, like Counselor Robey defining bulk waste better, demo defining things better, will be on, given to every resident when they get their sticker. Some people still have issues with trying to find stuff. When they get the sticker, we're going to give them the map of the whole place that shows you where everything is. On the other side will be the rules and regulations. So if anybody's looking for food waste, it's right there. Anybody's looking for aluminum cans, there. And here's all the bulk waste along this side. Here's the cardboard. Here's the bags of household trash. And that's all I have for my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Are there any other members of the public speaking in favor of the ordinance change? Any other members of the public speaking in favor of the ordinance change? Any other members of the public speaking in favor of the ordinance change? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public?
Counselor Osing, just a point of information.
Yes.
I'm just curious. I don't remember if you had said how people can unmute earlier, so I just wanted to repeat that in case people were having any issues. I'm not sure who's on the call, but just in case.
Sure, no, thank you, Councilwoman. So again, people that are on the phone that would like to speak, star 6. Press star 6, and then you'll be unmuted and able to speak. So again, any questions from the public? I'm looking up to Wilson to see, do we have anybody on at this point yet? Any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Are there any members of the public speaking in opposition? And reminder, star, I mean pound 6 will get you unmuted. Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that part of the public hearing. I'll open it up to questions from the City Councilors. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Got a couple of questions. I did get a chance to talk to one of the constituents in my ward, and he brought up a question of, first, additional bins. Is there, just for the record, can you explain why we can't actually get additional bins for households?
Sure. So additional Curb Side bins, we're under contract with Republic for so many bins. You get one trash and one receptacle. The trash is small, it's 65, and the recycling is at 95. That's in accordance with DEP guidelines. They're trying to make you recycle. Also, our grant that we get every year requires us to have that ratio. So the idea behind that is you're getting people to recycle. That being said, if you have extra, Marlboro allows you to have a resident drop-off center. And we talked before that if you're really recycling, you should be coming down there. We offer free recycling. Now we have free food waste. That should get a lot of the stuff out of your trash. And then you still have extra bags of yard waste, sorry, bags of trash you can still bring. So anything overflow from the curb should go down to the transfer station. Some communities have pay-as-you-go bags, but our setup is for the automatic trucks that pick the tote up and dump it. So bags would not serve us anything for overflow on the curb. So anything that you have in excess would be down at the transfer station.
Okay. Thank you for that. A couple more. How many people or how many families in Marlboro do not get stickers for the disposal station? I mean, you did the ratio of how many stickers, but how many people in Marlboro don't get a sticker?
Don't get a sticker?
Don't get a sticker. How many households? Any idea?
I don't know how many don't get a sticker.
I mean, it just makes those numbers.
So we are residential and condos, so anybody in an apartment doesn't. Is that what you're getting at?
No, just how many people don't show up to get a sticker? Just in general, you know, how many?
We have 6,000 stickers, and you have roughly, I think we have 12, that get Curb Side is roughly 12,000, so half gets stickers.
Okay.
If it's, that's how many get Curb Side. So I can give you that number.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. Also, just as a general question, I'm just concerned about keeping record of the pay items, you know, and how we do that. And then we can bring that up in the council, the committee meetings. Also, the swap shack is closed, and that will be closed for the duration of the pandemic?
Yes, that's what's advised, yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's tough to monitor that at the same time, and that's kind of a wild card. There are people just sort of, people just sort of go in there without checking, so we don't want to create an issue there, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for recognizing my raised hand. I didn't know if that was going to work, so whoever's monitoring that, thank you so much. A couple of questions. One is education, educating the general public as it relates to Curb Side. As we go through this, I have a feeling that there will be the concern and consideration that some people may put in more bulk waste into their regular trash bin. And I didn't know if we were planning to educate the residents of Marlboro or re-educate them on what can and cannot go into the trash bin. If you could, I got another question, but if you could answer that.
Well, bulk usually signifies it's too big to get in a bag or the tote. So really, anything municipal waste, as long as it's not hazardous waste, can go in that trash tote. So if you wanted to take a bulk item and cut it and break it apart so it could fit, you could still do it. It's municipal solid waste, but I guess it wouldn't be bulk anymore. It'd be little pieces of bulk at that point.
Okay, and I guess it led to the demolition, too. I've been by some bins that might have a little bit here and a little bit there of wood and demolition-type waste. Maybe that's more important, that we get that education out of what can go into that bin?
Sure. So demolition not necessarily is wood. If you have pieces of wood, that can go in bulk. Demolition is demolition. And why it's difficult is because it's heavy, and really, when you try to quantify it, you really need a scale. So if you, like what Hudson does, they weigh it, and it's usually in excess of $30. It's by the ton. $30 is the minimum for that stuff. So you can have little elements of what you might consider wood or a piece of drywall, but it's demo would be you're demoing something, you have a big load of it.
And thank you for that answer. And just for the listening audience, and in general, if you could explain presently what's happening at the station, can you still go down there with anything such as demolition, bulk waste? And two, if you can't, where can you go?
Sure. So the only thing that's really changed in the interim is the demolition we don't take. And you can go to Hudson for that and just pay. They weigh you on the scale. Everything else is just in a state of limbo, and anybody with an existing sticker with green, they're still on their old sticker. Anybody that didn't have a sticker has gotten a new form and paid $50, which will go towards their new sticker once we put them forward, so.
Okay, so you're not, at this present time, honoring the sticker from last fiscal year?
Yeah, we are honoring the sticker, but the demo is gone. The demo's the only change because you had the demo cards that lapsed, so we're not, we don't want to give those new ones out now.
I see. If you didn't have a sticker, part of that cost would go to your new sticker. I see what you're trying to say.
Yep, so anybody with the old sticker, we just keep using their old sticker. Then when they go to upgrade, some people might want to just pay the 150 right out of the chute. I don't know. So we just allow them to. And at any time, if you say you just want to, it's going to be the same sticker. If you want to just do recycling, you'll get the sticker for free. Then at some point, you want to upgrade to the standard sticker, you pay the $50. Then you want to, you run out of pay items, you pay the other 100. You just come with the check each time, and you upgrade.
And add on to that question is, I know you said Hudson, but I thought in the, maybe subcommittee, there was mention of the place across the street in Marlboro from our transfer station. Is that correct?
Yeah, they do, but it's a lot more expensive there.
Okay.
They don't tend to like small loads there, so it's a lot more expensive. We direct people to Hudson.
Okay. Maybe we can help educate the general public on that as well, just so they know their routes and so forth. And with that, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome, Counselor Orem. I understand we do have a member of the public that wishes to speak. Is that true? Or no? Hang on, if I believe it's Mr. Clancy, I can still call him. If Mr. Clancy unmutes himself, star 6. Was it star or pound? Now you guys got me confused. Star 6, yeah. Mr. Clancy, are you there? While we wait for Mr. Clancy to unmute himself, I'll open, continue with other councilors' questions. Counselor Tenera.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So I heard through your presentation, there was a, so actually cardboard is valuable for the city, and being from the other side of the city, it costs me an arm and a leg, you know, to get over there. So it doesn't, it kind of prohibits the people from the west side to go all the way over there. No offense to Laura Wagner's people, but, so, is there a way that, I get so much cardboard, it fills up my recycling bin. So unfortunately, the people in my house order a lot of products from Amazon, so we're overloaded. So anyways, is there another plan that we can have with cardboard? From what I gather, it's a million-dollar, billion-dollar business of collecting cardboard. So I don't know if we can jump on a bandwagon and get another, try to make more money with that, so.
So just an update on that. Last time I talked to you guys was at $75 a ton, and then right after that, when it went into the next month, the next bill, it dropped to $25 a ton, and now it's at zero. So it's still saving you, it's still saving you the $95 a ton for recycling, but it's not technically making, it's saving us money, not making us money at this point. As far as cardboard like that, our thinking was that you can store cardboard, maybe because it doesn't smell and makes fewer trips to the drop-off center. If there is, if it becomes like a need and we see that, we might be able to do cardboard drives. But something on a regular basis, I don't know how we do that, but we'd be open to suggestions.
Yeah, so much of it nowadays, so it's just clogging up the system, I think. Thank you.
Any other councilors with questions? Counselor Landers.
I do have a few questions and comments, if you want me to go ahead now.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, you are receiving an awful lot of compliments of how well the transfer station's working. And I've been down there a couple of times a week, and it really is, looks good, seems like it's working out well. And people are quite excited about the food waste. I had a, I go by my house the other day, he says, "Don, guess where I'm heading." And he was going down to buy his thing. They think it's a wonderful idea because he saw a garden that produced some good results with the results of the food waste, the compost. So it's really a good idea. And I know there might be a few more comments, Mr. President, but I just want to bring up the fact that this is in Public Service Committee right now. We had a good meeting. We felt it would be best to have a public hearing, which we're having now. So I'd like the, Mr. President, probably schedule a Public Service Committee meeting, probably the 8th, the 9th of September. Labor Day's the 7th, so I think we maybe ought to skip over maybe to the 9th. And then see how that goes, maybe report it out on the 14th, maybe, see how well things go. And, you know, perhaps even vote on it, maybe the 21st. We have those meetings there. Not that we're trying to rush it, but, you know, a good thing's going on, and we want to make sure it continues to be good, and then let it settle down well before winter settles in. So that would be my game plan right now. But I must say, Ted, you know, you guys are doing a good job. People are talking about it, and I see people down there, they're running up and down, you know, they're trunked out and putting the cardboard in, putting the papers in, putting the glass in. It's really, it's amazing. So good job. Keep up the good work. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to say thank you. That's really the workers down there, the foreman, Gary Aker, and the attendants. And when you treat it like with respect, then the people start treating it with respect, so, thank you.
Very good. Good job.
For the councilors on the phone, Councilors Pearlman or Wagner, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to give a shout out to interim Commissioner Scott. I was able to go down to the resident drop-off facility and was really impressed with all of the changes that happened, and he got to walk me through the different areas, and you could just see, like you just mentioned, you know, how the workers take a lot of pride in the facility itself. And I thought it was really great that Ted mentioned how this was sort of an interaction with the city, and so he wanted people to have that positive experience and knew that this might be one of those centralized places where people end up going. So I just want to appreciate him for letting me tour the facility and for his hard work. And also wanted to go off Counselor Landers' point around the composting. I just began my participation in the compost program myself, and I don't know if the interim commissioner can speak a little bit more about the composting program, just so people have that information as well. And I have another question afterwards.
Sure. So the food waste program is through Black Earth. So currently now, people can log on, and this is the Curb Side, onto blackearth.com, compost, blackearthcompost.com. If you're looking for it, just call the DPW. If you're confused, we'll let you know. The current fee is $99 for six months. We will give you the tote for free with the starter, the compostable bags, to get you started. Once we get more people, the price will keep going down. I think we're just under 60 now with the Curb Side. Also, we have the food waste, like I showed on the map, at the drop-off center. That's free, so, if anybody wants to take part in that. And if you ever have any questions about anything, what you can throw, what's the benefit of it, just call the DPW.
Counselor Pearlman.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to reiterate that point, that since I've been doing it, my trash has dramatically gone down, since most of it was food waste. So I think it's a really great program that we're participating in. My last question was around, going back to the earlier point during the presentation, around the spreading the word about the changes and making sure people are aware. I was just curious, that's, most of the concerns that I've heard from the public is mostly around that they're, you know, in support of the changes, but they want to make sure that they have the information. And I know we spoke a little bit about offering the information in multiple languages and making it prominent on the website, and I just didn't know if you could speak a little bit to that directly right now.
Sure. So you had made that comment to me, which is a great comment. The map that's shown up, we've already put that in multiple Portuguese and Spanish as well. And we will, we want to, we have the annual mailer that we've been kind of waiting for this for, and we do that, we're going to put this out, the map out, the regulations, the new regulations, the Republic Curb Side pickup. And we will be, we'll be on Facebook, we'll be on the website, and we'll probably even do a robo-call just to make sure everybody gets the information, try to cover as much as we can.
All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Any other, Counselor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have a couple. One, I was looking at the map quickly. Are textiles included in this facility?
Yes, the pink, the pink boxes, so there's one near the swap shack, and there's another one across from the bulk waste. They'll be in pink in the map. They're both textile. So they're, those are donation ones that we allow to put on the site.
Excellent. Okay, and I noticed, I know there's batteries and some electronics, so you don't take And I noticed, I know there's batteries and some electronics, so you don't take, I just wanted to clarify, you don't take hazardous waste? And is the city going to continue with the two hazardous waste collection days? Is that separate?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. So some of the items that are, we have at our hazardous waste, they like electronics, we always collect. Things that are really sort of hazardous waste, the batteries and the fluorescent bulbs are in the shack right when you drive in. We always have that. Those are also at our household hazardous waste day. We didn't have it in the spring. In the fall, vendors dropped out again, so we weren't able to secure a date in the fall. But hopefully, we have, we can start that up again in the spring. And we do have, I don't have it with me, but if you call the DPW, we have a site that continuously takes hazardous waste. Say you're cleaning out your house, you do have to pay for it, but that isn't the option for hazardous waste right now.
Okay, excellent. And one last question, I'm loving, I signed up for the Black Earth program too, it's fantastic. What, I'm just, I couldn't remember, I know you told us, but what, so people know as well, what happens to the compost? Are you selling it? Is it used in the city? What happens to it?
Sure. So Black Earth Compost takes it, and it's commercial composting, so it goes up to near Manchester by the Sea. It's in a commercial pile. It, they put it in large commercial piles where the heat gets really hot, 120 or something degrees. So if you have bones or anything else in there, it will all compost. So it's better than a backyard, where you can only put so many things, or meat that will smell. So, and they make compost out of it, then they sell it back in a bag. So if you are part of the curbside, you will get a free voucher for a bag of compost.
Nice, excellent. Okay, thank you, this is an excellent, you're doing an excellent job. Thank you very much.
Is it on?
Any other comments from the councilors? Any other comments from the councilors? Any other questions or comments from the councilors?
I, I.
One, I understand.
President Austin?
Mr. Clancy. Welcome.
Former Council, former Councilor Clancy.
President Clancy.
Thank you, thank you very much. I had a hard time getting on earlier. I just finally figured it out, it is a difficult way to have a public hearing. I did have a few questions concerning this, and this is probably, Ted Scott probably would be the one that would be best to answer these. You know, I looked at the initial order when it was, when it was sent to the council, and the last item, the last line of it, it says, by deleting the entire chapter 540, are you planning on deleting the entire chapter or just sections of it?
No, just the sections.
Just the sections, so you want to get rid of sections 20, 21, and 22?
Correct.
In their entirety. So in other words, for stickers, special permits and exemptions.
Yeah.
Question, why special permits?
The, they used to have, it used to be, like a, there was no rules for this really special permit. So what we're trying to do is just provide a basic service. So if you, before, you were not allowed to come for some reason. Now, we're trying to simplify the rules, where if you want to come and pay, then we'll charge you, except if it's demo. So that was the idea behind it, to simplify the rules. What happens there is you start having all kinds of exceptions, then it makes it difficult to enforce, and it makes it kind of, the system seems a little more open, where people start to argue more. If you have nice, clear-cut rules, if you want to, if you want to use it more, then you just pay more. Makes it much simpler and much better environment, where everybody knows, everybody's, it's fair to everybody. With other types of rule, it feels like some people are getting away with stuff, or they're getting special privileges, or so-and-so did this, I saw this guy come in with that, and this makes it nice, clear-cut.
Well, I'll give you, you know, as, in my period of time on the city council, I used to be, have to field various questions from constituents. And one of them was, you know, they had to actually get down to the, pretty much to the transfer station on a daily basis, because they were handling adult diapers. And they tend to smell if you want to leave them in your containers for a period of a week. So, and they started questioning that individual, and he actually had to get a special permit to allow him to do that on a daily basis. With your, with your, with your new system, what you're talking about is, you're going to have a period of, I think it's 50 household bags of residential solid waste that you bring down there. And if this individual is going to be bringing down five a week, you know, he's going to run through all of his bags in a very short time. So I think that there has to be exemptions made for individuals like that.
So I think what happens in that case is, those are, and again, it's, the attendants, if you're coming down there every day, the attendants, if you're coming down there once a week, the attendants know you by name. If you're coming down there every day with just a small kitchen bag that has one item in it, or a couple items in it, this is for 50 bags of full, full trash bag size things that we're trying to limit. If there's an elderly person that's going to bring a small, tiny bag every day, we're not going to come down on them, because the attendants will know them, you know, by name at that point. So, again, we're not unreasonable, it's 50, 50 bags of trash. So if someone's just bringing down one thing, I don't think that's the end of the world there.
That, you know, that's basically one per week.
Yep. And if it's just one item, again, though, and again, it's, is the person just bringing that, or is, or is one of their, one of their children trying to, trying to take advantage of the thing too? If they're just, if they're just bringing down one, like you say, the diaper or the item in a bag, then that's not a full kitchen bag, so, I mean, and we'll know, we'll know who they are. Again, we're trying to, we're trying to curtail the abusers here, not come down on someone that, that's trying to, you know, come more often with small.
I absolutely understand exactly what their, the intent of the new regulation is, because there are a lot of individuals that do take in, take advantage of the situation. You know, we, you know, I have also, another one was in the, in the, the various definitions. I think that in the definitions, there should be some indication as to what constitutes a bag. You know, as you said, there's a 10, I have a 10-pound bag, a 33, 10-gallon bag, a 33-gallon bag, or 50-gallon bag. I think when you craft the ordinance, you have to take and put something in there, you know, that actually delineates what a bag is.
Yeah, I think we'll put a, go ahead. We'll put a range in there.
Yeah.
If people want to bring a bigger bag, then that's fine. If it's in, if it's in a bag and they throw it in there, that's fine. So we can have a range. A lot of plate, like Hut, they'll have certain prices for certain, I don't think we want to get into that, we'll just have it as a range. If it fits in a bag and they throw it in there, that's good enough for us. And like I said, if it's a small bag, they're bringing something once a day, that's barely, you take five of those things you take in a day to make one bag, then that's not the end of the world either, so.
Also, you know, on the bulk waste, you know, you're talking about various items, you know, like, could I bring a stove, refrigerator, or hot water heater down there?
Those are appliances.
Yeah, well, under bulk waste, what is the description of a bulk, what is bulk waste?
Bulk waste is municipal waste that doesn't fit in a bag, pretty much.
Okay, so in other words, if I had a chair?
That's bulk waste.
Okay. Now, not every individual in the city of Marlboro has a, has a truck. Some might have small travel trailers. Are you still going to allow small utility trailers to be brought in by car?
So the load is, the load is done by pretty much the bed of a pickup. Now, if that bed and a pickup is in the pickup, or that bed of, the pickup is in a trailer, it's the cubic area or the volume that we're looking at. Much like you have yard waste, if the yard waste overheats, but there's a lot of room where you just squish it down into that area, that's fine too. So we're looking at kind of the volume there.
Yeah, also, speaking of yard waste, at the, in the spring and in the fall, when you do your yard cleanups, you have grass clippings and garden waste and things like that. How many times can you actually go in and out on a, like a fall day, during the week?
So we like to say three times a day. That's what's been imposed already, because you're getting landscapers that abuse it. So we've imposed like three times a day.
Okay, so, no, I think that the individuals who run the transfer station are beginning to understand who these individuals are, so they probably should be excluding them, because they're taking advantage of a good system. No, we have a great system, the place works great down there. I have to compliment the DPW. And since you've taken it over, it looks a lot better, it's a lot better maintained. I think that, you know, you're doing a great job there. Just another question, replacement sticker cost still going to be $25?
No, there won't be any cost for replacement stickers. I think, I think Counselor Irish asked that last time. We have the stickers, the computer system, the computer software we have now tracks everything from that number, so if you want to take the sticker and move it to another car, you just got to tell them, you just got to register it that you're switching it to another car. So there won't be an additional cost.
Okay, okay. Now, I think my final question would be, why the discrimination between senior citizens and disabled veterans with the amount of bulk items? You know, normally you'd have six, and the senior citizens and disabled veterans would have four.
Well, the thinking, the thinking was, the seniors wouldn't have as many bulk items. And we also tried to keep the value the same for everybody, it's a $200 value for everybody.
We all pay the same amount of taxes. Also, in the, in the chapter 540, Article 1 talks about dumps. And that goes 541 through 15. Are you going to eliminate the term dumps in the, in the ordinance?
I think you're talking about the section before this one, that Councilor Roby brought up. And once I get this one through, we will, if I have the time, we will look at that whole section, whether it needs to stay or not, or, I think it does have to for a couple items, but that, I'll look at that and change that as well. Taking baby steps here.
Yeah, you're, I'm listening to you, you're in and out. I want to thank you very much for everything that you do, Ted. You know, I enjoy seeing you. It's too bad that I couldn't be sitting in the chamber with you tonight, and I thank the councilors for their indulgence in allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. So on the last part, any other questions from the councilors? Any other questions from the councilors? Councilor Avon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, thank you. You know, I'll just echo everyone else's sentiments. The facility looks great. I'm down there about once a week with my lawn clippings, and it's, I'm usually, every time I get there, I'm the only bag there. I mean, they are in and out of there, cleaning it up quite frequently, so everything down there is great. You guys really should be commended. Just to build on what Mr. Clancy had just called in about, one of the questions I had, and we talked about it at the Public Services meeting, I was surprised to learn that there's about half, so about 6,000 residential stickers, about half that are for seniors, for people 65 and older, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then, so, and one of the reasons about limiting it to four was there was a concern about perhaps other people using those stickers. Do we, do you guys have the data that said, that shows how many of those 3,000 senior stickers that were, there was no fee for, that they used? How, like, what the range of bulk items that they used?
I could look at it, but it's not, out of the 3,000 seniors, very, I would, I'm just going by anecdote, but it's not that many of them use it a lot.
Yeah.
So they have the stickers, and they make them three times a year. So a lot of, that's a, for at least half, are hardly using it. And then, the other half use it kind of regularly, like other people, and then you're having a small, again, you got a small, probably the 3% again, that are abusing, like, it's their kids or something, where they're just putting way too much trash for a senior.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Any comments or questions from the councilors? Comments or questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in Public Services.
That's correct.
Take a one-minute recess to clear the lines. At 8:47. Agenda item number three. Communication from Councilor Austin and Councilor Tenera regarding the Inspire Energy Contract Extension through January 2024.
Mr. President.
Councilor Tenera.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick notes on this. Done, well, the team has done a great job as far as saving the city some money here. So just a quick, quick synopsis. So this will extend our contract to January 2024, and our rate is actually going down from 0.09390, excuse me, from .09690 to .09390. So, so we're getting a better rate, is what we're trying to say. So this is still 100% green product. And let's see, in the first five months, from November 19th to March 2020, the city has saved $1,760,000. So it's looking good, we're doing a great job, the team is, and hopefully we can continue this. So I make a motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file. Is there any discussion? And Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, is this something that needs to be approved by the council?
No, sir.
Okay. So I just then want to just express some concerns that I had with this. You know, we have a 5% savings, which I think is fine. My concern, you know, and this was going to go on to 2021, I am concerned about extending the saving, well, the extension of 2024, because at the same time this is going on, we're going to be negotiating the solar overlay district over the landfill on Hudson. And I would expect them to be related, you know. If someone's going to be negotiating to put a solar overlay, you know, at that facility, you know, that energy I would expect to come into the city, not coming from a national wind power source. And if we, because this agreement's in place, that is off the table. So I'm kind of concerned with that. That's really the biggest concern. Also, you know, it seems that anytime we have these types of contracts, they go further and further out. It's making certain assumptions that, you know, there could be savings in the long term, and, you know, we're not sure exactly what's going to happen by 2024. There's a couple of wind turbine farms that are supposed to be coming online off the coast, maybe by then too. So I just feel that this is, you know, I, since we can't vote on it, I can't say anything more than I express concern as far as how this was extended without any say from the council. Thank you.
I will just remind the councilors, you've given the permission by the orders to allow the municipal aggregation to enter into contracts. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to the point that was made, individual city residents have the option of not using this as a resource. If they can find a cheaper rate somewhere else, if a solar facility comes out there and offers them a rate, go for it. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I understand the point of wanting to have a long term because we kept dealing with issues of short term. I have to go back up to bid again. This keeps everybody consistent. And I, I don't think there will be too much of an issue with national grid being lower than this rate. Historically, that has not happened. National grid has always been higher, and I think that will continue. Thank you.
You're welcome, Counsel Roby. Any other councilors? Councilors on remotely, just speak up if you have any input. If not, on the motion to accept and place on file, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Ossing. Counselor Ossing votes yes. Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to accept and place on file, the communication is approved. Eleven in favor, zero opposed. Agenda item number four.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $2,500,000, which moves funds from undesignated fund to various capital outlay accounts to fund the capital improve, to fund capital improvement projects.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to Finance Committee, please.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Roby.
Thank you. It was pointed out in an article in the paper that there was no information in this about specific streets. In the past, we've gotten a list. There were a few in there, but it wasn't clear if those were all of them. So if this, when this goes to committee, if the mayor can have more detail about that, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
I'm sure the mayor's listening and he'll be, Mr. Scott, they'll, they'll present us with the list of streets. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor-
Counselor Ossing. Mark Orem had his hand, I guess.
So, again, so, again, to help me, I don't have TV access, so just speak up and that, that'll work.
I'll speak up. I'll speak up, as long as you don't feel like I'm interrupting.
No, you're not, you're not interrupting, Mark. That's fine.
No, and I would just ask that, at the Finance Committee meeting, we also have our Finance Director, so we can talk about free cash, any amount of money within that line item that we're taking it from, just so we know where we stand with the future economical issues that may be coming up. I'd like to be able to have that knowledge as well during the Finance Committee meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Counsel Orem. And just for information, our balance in free cash right now is 5.5 million, using, again, that's carried over from fiscal year 20, which the governor's order allows us to do. So taking that 2.5 million off of that, assuming that gets approved, that'll leave $3 million that will eventually get rolled into the fiscal year 21, free cash, unless the mayor decides to spend something else.
No, no, thank you, Mr. President. That was so, that was obvious on the spreadsheet on the second page. I'm just concerned about this coming fiscal year. So I think it would be a healthy conversation to have during this process. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to refer to the Finance Committee. Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
And Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion referred to finances approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $27,775, which moves funds from reserved for salaries to sick leave buyback, to fund the sick leave buyback for three retirees from the Department of Public Works and Fire Department.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a benefit that retirees do receive upon retirement, and my motion is to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the transfer to fund the retirement, fund the balance left in the retirements for three individuals. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to approve the transfer. Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the transfer is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding a grant acceptance in the amount of $27,500 from the Executive Office of Administration and Finance for the Human Resources Department to be used for succession, succession planning. Sorry.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, as you can imagine, it is very challenging for the city to deal with retirements and, and certainly, you know, going forward to continue that level of service for our residents. I think this is a wonderful idea to looking at this succession plan. So my motion is to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant for $27,500 for succession planning. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm a big fan of institutional memory. I think that's a critical part of any large organization that needs to be sustained over the long run. I've worked in large companies, and I think in the city, considering the size and scope, having that type of institutional memory handed down literally from generation to generation is a critical part of the future of the city. Specifically, I'm thinking of Pam Wilderman. She is brilliant, and she knows everything that goes on in the city. And I hope she never retires, but I know she will. And pretty soon, too. She's an amazing woman. And there's many more in there like that, and some that have already retired. So I think this is great. They're actually figuring out how to hand, address this and make sure it's got done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to approve the grant. Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the grant is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $17,500 from the Executive Office of Administration and Finance to assist the city with identifying areas of inconsistency with our permitting program, ASCALA.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, it's always a positive for training and any improvements in the process that is needed. So my motion is to approve.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to approve the grant. Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the grant for $17,500 is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $5,000 from Bay Path Elder Services for the Council on Aging to assist with the transportation needs of Marlboro seniors due to COVID, due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Counselor Irish.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Timing could not be better for this, during this COVID-19 pandemic. And, and to certainly work to do transportation for our seniors that may be needing that. So certainly thank you to Bay Path Elder Services, Executive Pope and her staff. It's a wonderful grant to get at this time. A motion to approve the grant.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant for $5,000 for the Council on Aging. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the $5,000 grant for the Council on Aging is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding a request pursuant to Chapter 125, Section 10 of the Code of the City of Marlboro to start Michelle Andre, public health nurse, at step two of the public health nurse salary schedule.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Irish.
Well, this, this is obviously a very important position with the experience and skills needed for this position, and also to help retain employment in this, in this wonderful city. This evening, I make a motion to approve this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the starting step for the Board of Health Nurse at step two. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Mr. President.
Hang on, Counsel Orem. Counsel Dusset.
Much, Mr. President. I'm willing to bet him and I have the same question. I'm just assuming that she's going to step, step aside from the other roles?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
If she will, she's, right now, she has two part-time jobs as nurse. She's stepping aside from those roles.
I believe this is going to be a full-time position at the Board of Health.
I just, I don't know, the mayor-
I'll check with the mayor.
I was going to bring, I was going to bring that up-
No, good question.
-in the council meetings, so, but yeah.
Good, good question, good question.
Thank you.
The mayor's listening. He might come down and let us know. I'll move over to Counsel Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. This position, I'm familiar with, working in the public health field. And we're finding it very difficult right now to attract solid candidates for public health nursing, no matter what city or town that may be looking for a public health nurse. It's a very important position, a very vital position for public health. And I have no problem accepting this tonight. And also would ask, and I spoke to the chairman of Finance over the weekend, is to ask that sometime, maybe with personnel, we can review the salary schedule for the public health nurse to see if, really, if the steps need to be changed in all respects to what's happening here. With that, as I said, I have no problem in approving this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak.
I second that, Mr. President.
No, you got to make the-
Oh. Mr. President, motion to, motion to, uh, uh-
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak. Call the roll on the suspension, please. Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to allow the mayor to suspend the rules to allow the mayor to speak is approved. Eleven zero. Mr. Mayor, you, you can speak right from there if you'd like. I'm sure Counselor Pearlman will be honored that you're sitting at her chair.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman, for allowing me to use your desk, Kiel. We'll have it cleaned thoroughly after I leave. Um, yes, the, this, this particular nurse was working down at the Hildur School, and that facility will be used for something different. She'll, she'll no longer be working at the school. She'll be working exclusively for the city of Marlboro, on the city side.
Counsel Dusset, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor? Hearing none, on the motion to approve the step-two starting salary for the Board of Health Nurse, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to approve the step-two starting for the Board of Health Nurse is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Do you enjoy sitting back in a council seat? You don't have to answer that. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Police Chief David Georgie as keeper of the lockup for a term of one year.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that we can trust the police chief as the keeper of the lockup, so I motion to approve this tonight.
Motion made and seconded to approve the chief as the keeper of the lockup. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel, Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to approve the chief as the keeper of the lockup is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Dr. Joseph Tennyson to the Board of Health for a three-year term to expire on February 6th, 2023.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to approve the reappointment of Dr. Tennyson tonight. With, given what's going on, we might as well just approve this now, so we can't change his mind before we meet for personnel. So motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the reappointment of Dr. Tennyson to the Board of Health. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Dumis.
Counsel Dumis votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Motion to reappoint Dr. Tennyson to the Board of Health is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from the mayor regarding reappointments of Robert Fagone and Alan Slattery to the Historical Commission for three-year terms respectively to expire from date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the reappointments of Bob Fagone and Alan Slattery to the Historical Commission. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Oops, Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
Motion to approve the reappointments of Mr. Fagon and Mr. Slattery to the Historical Commission is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item thirteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Linda Clark to the Board of Registars for a three-year term to expire on April 1st, 2023.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the reappointment of Linda Clark to the Board of Registars. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, or hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
On the motion to reappoint Linda Clark to the Board of Registars, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item fourteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Michael Cabral to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term to expire from date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Cabral misses coming into the chamber, so we will move to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Personnel Committee. Again, this is a new appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
The motion to refer Mike Cabral to the Parks and Rec Committee is referred to Personnel. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item fifteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Emily Wild to the Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire from date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last one. So with this being a new appointment, it's good to have a face to the name, so I move to Personnel. Motion to move to Personnel, please. Thank you.
Motion is made and seconded to refer the appointment to Personnel. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
The motion to send the appointment of Emily Wild to the Cultural Council to the Personnel Committee is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item sixteen.
Communication from the mayor regarding the FY 2020 MIA Rewards Credit.
Counselor Irish. Thank you, Mr. President. This is certainly a great way for the city to earn credits to the next year's policy through the MIA. Thank you to Beverly Sleeper and motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication on the MIA Rewards. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Counsel Orem.
Thank you. Now, just the note, too, that it's saving the city quite a bit of money by being proactive with training. This year, we're surpassing past years, and I'm glad to hear it. Mass into local insurance agency offers a great program, and the amount, I believe, from the past year surpassing was fifty-two thousand, fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-one. And that, it's not just about money, it's about saving lives and the safety of our employees. I commend everyone that participated in this program.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other comments or questions from the counselors? If not, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file the communication.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the communication is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item seventeen.
Communication from the mayor regarding the OPEB update.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's always good to see these updates on the OPEB. You know, compared to other communities, Marlboro is moving into a, certainly a stronger position. My motion is to accept and place on file.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication on the OPEB Trust Update. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Counsel Orem.
Just quickly, that's why I was asking earlier about free cash. You'll notice in the second paragraph that the mayor's anticipating submitting a transfer request for the end of the fiscal year to move funds from our certified free cash amount into OPEB, which is understandable, but again, that's why I was being a little bit inquisitive when we were discussing the previous discussion on free cash use for other projects. We do need to be cognizant of everything happening economically within our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other discussion on the councils, from the counselors? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to file, to accept and place on file the correspondence.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the OPEB Trust Update is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item eighteen.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding the proposed zoning amendment for the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district in proper legal form, Order Number 20-107975B.
Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this to Reports of Committee.
Motion made and seconded to move to the Reports of Committee portion of the program. Any discussion on the motion? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Yes, sir.
The motion to refer Agenda Item 18 to the Reports section of the meeting is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item nineteen.
Communication from Assistant City Solicitor Jason Peaks regarding the application for special permit by VD Naturals LLC to operate an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 505 Boston Post Road West in proper legal form, Order Number 1920-107881D.
Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to move this to Agenda Number 29.
Motion is made and seconded to move Agenda 19 to Agenda Item Number 29. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
On the motion to move Agenda Item 19 down to Number 29, it is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number twenty.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Kerrigan regarding the state primary election call. In the name of, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the City of Marlboro who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at Ward 1, Precinct 1 &amp; 2, Francis J. Kane School, 520 Farm Road. Ward 2, Precincts 1 &amp; 2, Francis J. Kane School, 520 Farm Road. Ward 3, Precinct 1, the Senior Center at 40 New Street. Ward 3, Precinct 2, the Raymond J. Richards School at 80 Foley Road. Ward 4, Precincts 1 &amp; 2, at the Senior Center at 40 New Street. Ward 5, Precincts 1 &amp; 2, at Masonic Lodge, 8 Newton Street. Ward 6, Precinct 1 &amp; 2, at the First Lieutenant Charles W. Whitcomb School at 25 Union Street. Ward 7, Precincts 1 &amp; 2, at the Hildreth School, 85 Sawen Street. On Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, then and there, for the purpose of casting their votes in the state primary for candidates of political parties for the following offices: Senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, Representative in Congress for the 3rd District, Counselor for the 3rd District, Senator in General Court for the Middlesex and Worcester District, Representative in the General Court for the 4th Middlesex District, Representative in the General Court for the 13th Middlesex District, Register of Probate for Middlesex County. It is further ordered that the polling place is legally designated by the City Council be opened at 7 o'clock in the forenoon and be closed at 8 o'clock in the evening. The city clerk is hereby authorized to cause notice to be given by publication of this order in a local newspaper and by posting a copy of the same in a conspicuous place in the office of the city clerk for order of the city council. Anybody want?
Motion to accept, motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the state primary election call correspondence. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Counsel Orem.
Thank you. I just wanted to say if our clerk runs the elections the way he's been running the early elections, residents can be grateful that he is very cognizant of the COVID-19 procedures and offers masks if someone didn't have a mask, as well as sanitizer, directionals. Steve, you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Robey.
Counsel Robey votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Eleven yes.
The motion to accept and place on file the state primary election call is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number 21.
Communication from City Clerk Stephen Carrigan regarding an update on vote by mail and the state primary election. Do you mind reading that letter? Sir, dear President Osing and Counselors, I wanted to provide the City Council with an update on vote by mail, early voting, and the state primary scheduled for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. The City Clerk's office has been working diligently to ensure that every request for a vote by mail ballot is sent out in a timely manner. As of the date of this letter, we have processed 5,309 vote by mail requests, in addition to 812 absentee ballot requests. Voters of Marlborough will have until Wednesday, August 26th, 2020, to submit a request for either a vote by mail or absentee ballot application. In addition, in-person early voting is set to begin on Saturday, August 22nd, 2020, and end on Friday, August 28th, 2020. This year, in-person early voting will take place at the Marlborough Senior Center at 40 New Street. I've attached a list of the hours available. In addition, they are posted on the city website on the Clerk's page. I also wanted to remind residents on the several ways that they can return their absentee or vote by mail ballots. This year, voters will have the option to either mail their ballot back in the postage-paid envelope that was provided, drop them off in the drop boxes located at the front or rear entrances of City Hall during normal business hours. We have also provided a drop box in the lobby of City Hall. I would remind voters that they must have their ballots returned by the close of polls on Election Day, which is 8:00 p.m. on September 1st, 2020, in order for them to count. I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff of the Clerk's office, Wilson Chu, Leo Mercado, and Melissa Peltier, for their tireless work and dedication to the City of Marlborough. Their professionalism and work ethic have made the task required much easier. I also would like to thank all the election workers who will be manning the polling locations on September 1st. Even during these difficult times, our elections must still take place, and I am grateful for the wardens, clerks, and inspectors who will be working with us to ensure every voter has the opportunity to cast their ballot. I urge residents to continue to check the city's website and Facebook page for updates as we approach the November election. If residents have questions, they can contact the City Clerk's office at 508-460-3775. Thank you for the opportunity for the update, and I am available to answer any questions. Sincerely, Stephen Carrigan, City Clerk. Counselor Dumas.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the update from the City Clerk on the voting status, and I would echo that your staff is doing an outstanding job, Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, thank you. They are. Any comments or questions from the Counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, President Osing. I also want to echo the sentiments. The City Clerk's been doing a really wonderful job. I just wanted to remind people as well that the voter registration deadline for the state primary has passed, but for the general, it's October 24th. So if you still want to register to vote, you're able to. And I also wanted to make sure that folks knew, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you want to submit a vote by mail request, and they have until Wednesday, they could do that by filling out the form online and even emailing it to the City Clerk, right? In addition to being able to submit it in person or by mail?
That is correct. In addition to the drop boxes or by mail, it has to be received by our office by the 26th. We are able to accept them by email, fax, carry a pigeon, anything else that you'd like to send it in by. So as long as it's into our office by the 26th of August, we will get your ballot out to you for the September primary.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just got a quick question, Steve, and conversation with my wife. We got a bunch of envelopes for the vote by mail. We're planning to drop one off here while I'm in the City Council.
Sure.
Does it matter whether or not it's the beige envelope or the white envelope that we drop in the box?
The requirement is, there are several envelopes. The outer envelope, obviously, everything goes in. Then there's a white return envelope that you would, if you mail it back. But as long as it's in the ballot envelope and it's been signed and sealed, that is all that is required if you're physically dropping them off. If you're going to put them in the mail, you have to put them in that white outer envelope.
Right. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on the motion to accept and place on file, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Tanara.
Counselor Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yay.
Motion to accept and place on file the update on the election call is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 22.
Application for an LED sign special permit from Viewpoint Sign and Awning on behalf of Dunkin' Donuts at 269 East Main Street. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have another business in Marlborough who wants to update their drive-through equipment. I would move to set a date for a public hearing for September 21st and to refer to urban affairs.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to urban affairs, set a public hearing for September 21st, and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to have the LED sign permit for 269 East Main Street is referred to urban affairs with a public hearing on September 21st and to be advertised is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 23.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of WP Marlborough Mass. Owner LLC regarding a project name change from Volaris Marlborough to Walcott Heritage Farms, 339 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 20-107995C. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the communication is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 24.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of WP Marlborough Mass. Owner LLC regarding a request to extend time limitations to November 18th, 2020 at 10:00 p.m. on the application for a special permit to build a multifamily residential project in the business district to be known as Walcott Heritage Farms, consisting of 188 units and four buildings at 339 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 20-107995C. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was mentioned before, because there are so many other moving pieces to this project, it's not going to get to the City Council Urban Affairs for a while. So the petitioner was kind enough to agree to another time extension. So I would move to approve the time extension to November 18th.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the extension for the special permit to November 18th. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman.
Just for a point of clarification, what was the date as it currently stands that we were supposed to have it by now it's being moved to November?
I'll tell you in a minute unless Mr. Carrigan gets it before me.
I did not bring that with me, sir. I'm sorry.
No, hang on, I got it. It is October 20th.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the motion to approve the extension to November 18th? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
Motion to extend the time on the special permit to November 18th is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Number 25.
Communication sent to the City Council regarding application for a special permit by WP Marlborough Owner LLC, 339 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 20-107995C. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the information provided in this letter from the owner of the property, or the prior owner. I've been moved to accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the various pieces of correspondence on McGee property. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the correspondence is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 26.
Communication from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel will be in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes on various dates in August and September of 2020. Counsel Oram.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. This notice is posted with the City Clerk, as I mentioned before. Public service announcement, you can try to call them at Central Mass Mosquito if you want to initiate a request for mosquito spraying on your property. They will do it from the roadside by calling 508-393-3055. I know that number by heart because I've been working with them for years. But the other thing is you can go on their website, which is their initials, www.cmmcp.org. It's easier to do it that way. Also, you can opt out if you wish. I would not recommend that, but you can actually do that as well. And this is for the truck-mounted spraying. If we ever get to the need for aerial, obviously, everyone would be notified through various meteor outlets. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there a accept and place on file, Counsel Oram?
I recommend we accept and place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from Central Mass Mosquito. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the Central Mass communication is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 27.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
President Osing.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I recommend that we approve the minutes of the Board, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the communications for the minutes of Boards and Committees. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the minutes for Boards and Commissions is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number 28.
Claims.
President Osing.
Counsel Dusset.
Recommend the claims get sent to legal.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to send the claims to the legal department is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Reports of committee. Who wants to go first? Counsel Roby.
Sure. Let me put everybody to sleep. All right. The City Council, I believe, did receive updated copies. I do apologize to city councilors who I missed as being present at the meeting, so those have been updated. The City Council Urban Affairs Committee met on July 28th. We had several items on our agenda. The first one was Order Number 20-107976, a communication from Attorney Burbow on behalf of Marlborough Hub LLC with proposed zoning change off of Valley Street, being a portion of MAP 82 Parcel 125, currently zoned industrial to resident C. The chair reviewed the communication received from the planning board. They had given unanimous approval. There were some communications we had received from Mr. De Persio and from Mr. Cook regarding their opposition to this. After much discussion on the parcel and our options, Counsel Dusset moved, it was seconded to approve the request to rezone a portion of MAP 82 Parcel 125 from industrial to resident C. This will just lay on the table, and we'll take it up on September 4th for the council vote. Order Number 20-107975, the proposed zoning amendment, Chapter 650, to add new Section 38, to create a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district. That is a mouthful. The committee began discussion on this. Again, we had the planning board's recommendation, which was unanimous. They did have conditions that they would like to see appropriate screening from the abutting neighbors be included and that the installation be cited to preserve the scenic view from the rail trail. Draft zoning changes were reviewed against changes that were submitted by Mr. De Persio and Ms. Ryder. There was discussion on the properties delineated in Exhibit A, everybody agreeing to keep all the parcels. A question arose on Section I Design Standards, Subsection E. It was agreed to remove the last sentence, which reads, "Any topsoil remaining after stabilization shall be stockpiled on-site for use during decommissioning," and in Subsection D, where it was agreed to add in as appropriate after the word "screened." It was moved to refer the order as amended to legal, to be placed in proper legal form, and postpone the matter to the August 4th Urban Affairs Meeting so the committee could review it and take a final vote. So on August 4th, the council discussed Order Number 20-107948, application for an electronic message board gas pricing sign from William Camuso for Lincoln 431 LLC Shell Station. This had had a public hearing. The chair reviewed the communications from some residents stating that they are against the granting, and one from Mr. Camuso that showed the station with the band lighting on the canopy turned off. There were lots of questions about the actual lighting and discussion on how bright the station was. It was also clarified that the sign's top part showing the Shell logo remains internally illuminated with the change to the three price panels becoming two smaller LED signs. It was moved, and Counsel Dusset moved to approve the LED sign special permit with the two conditions that were read into the record. We will ask for suspension this evening to have this be put in proper legal form for a final vote on September 14th. Order Number 20-108046, a request from William Camuso on behalf of Camuso Enterprises LLC to operate a gas station, Shell Station at 431 Lincoln Street on a 24-hour basis pursuant to Chapter 342, Section 2 of the Code of the City of Marlborough. There was a lot of discussion about this site, as well as conditions that would be added. Counsel Dusset moved to have the petitioner provide a current photometric plan and an updated plan showing less illumination and less bleed, to have the chair create a draft order for discussion at the next meeting with all the conditions, and postpone in committee to a date to be set. This is still in committee. I just want everyone to be aware of where we are. And our final item agenda was Number 20-107975, the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, to add a new Section 38 to create the large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district. The chair reviewed the documents showing two items recommended from the July 28th meeting, two additional changes made by the solicitor. It was moved to approve, as amended, the changes to Chapter 650 to insert a new Section 38. The chair will ask for suspension this evening to vote on this at the August 24th meeting, and we have it all in proper form. So I will note that we had received communication from Commissioner Cook, that he supported the city efforts to enhance renewable energy. And the communication came after we had the committee meetings, but I do want everybody to know that he did send that.
Okay, before we get to the next one, I want to clean up urban affairs. So you want a suspension of the rules for Order Number 20-17948 on the electronic message board for the Shell Station to refer to the solicitor to put in proper format, right?
Correct.
All right, so there's a motion to suspend the rules to place Order Number 107948 into prop, to send it to solicitor put in proper format. Discussion on the motion. Voice good? Ask the clerk to call the roll. Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes, and the City Clerk needs to turn his mic up.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram, vote yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Counsel Tanara votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman. Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to suspend the rules to forward this to the city solicitor to put Order Number 20-107948, which is the electronic message board for the Shell Station in proper format, is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. And then, your second suspension was for the solar overlay. I'll let you work through, you've got a couple things, you want to get the communications and...
Right, first up, I would like to move to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor, item number 18 on our agenda.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file, Agenda Item 18, which is a communication from the solicitor that puts these large-scale solar facility in proper legal format. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file the communication. Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor placing the large-scale solar ordinance in proper format is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. And you want a suspension of the rules?
Um, yes. I would like to, um, the communication mentions a revision offered by the city engineer De Persio to clarify topsoil in Section 1 Design Standards. He suggests the council vote to incorporate the revision before we vote on the order, so I need to move to suspend the rules to take that vote, and if the city clerk would read it, please?
Yeah, well, first, let's, first, the motion to suspend the rules to vote on it, and then, then you'll do it. So, motion's made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up the recommendation from the Urban Affairs on the solar ordinance. Any discussion on the suspension? Ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension. Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Suspension is approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby?
Thank you, if the clerk would read the motion, then I would move to approve.
Um, motion to amend, propose Section 650-38iE entitled "Topsoil" by striking out the current language in its entirety and replacing it with the following. "Topsoil, no topsoil shall be removed from the site, no topsoil shall be disturbed from existing areas except as part of an approved plan that is protective of the landfill cap. It is anticipated that the solar facility shall be constructed on the existing grade or on grades that have been built up from the existing grade." Counsel Roby?
Move to approve the amendment.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the amended order for the ordinance for the solar overlay district. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Oram?
I think our city engineer did a good job explaining that he is presently working with the DEP to make sure that the remediation, which we approved 3 million plus to do the remediation at the landfill, occur with this condition. Without this condition, obviously, we would have some other issues, as well as the storage of topsoil, so I'm glad he addressed both within the same con, uh, within the same process, but again, we have to be careful to not get too far with the solar panels until we make sure the remediation has been completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is an ordinance change, uh, so, Counsel, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I thought we had to vote on the amended piece first, and then we would vote on the whole thing as amended.
So, on the, you are correct, Counsel Roby, on the amended, accept the amended wording from the city solicitor. Any discussion on that? Clerk can call the roll on approving the amended language for the ordinance. Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The amended language identified by the solicitors approved, eleven in favor and none opposed. Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, with the motion having carried, I move the recommendation of committee to approve the zoning amendment to Chapter 650, to add a new Section 38, creating a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district as amended.
So, again, this is an ordinance change, and the motion is to approve the ordinance as amended. So, if everybody's, any discussion on approving the ordinance before I read the four stages? Counsel Dussett?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a long time coming, and I'm really excited about having this capability within the city, and hopefully, this is something that will provide renewable energy for future generations within the city.
Thank you, well said, Counsel Dussett. Any other comments or questions from the counselors? Hearing none, we'll go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading, roll call, please. Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. First one is approved, eleven in favor, zero opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, roll call, please, Mr. Clerk. Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Second item is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, please call the roll. Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. That is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Time's up. I, hearing none, the ordinance is approved. Thank you, Counsel Dussett, thank you very much. Moving on with reports, veterans.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Veterans Affairs Committee met on August 4th at 7:00 PM with committee members and other city counselors participating, both remotely and in person. There was one item on our agenda, it was Order Number 20-108043A, Communication from Mayor Vigent Regarding Additional Information for the Naming of a Field in Honor of Dispersing Clerk Second Class Harold Cole. In the previous committee meeting held on July 9th, the committee voted unanimously to favorably recommend as amended the naming of the new elementary school as the Goodnow Brothers School, and to name the field located at 441 Bolton Street as the Lance Corporal Richard Demers Field, while postponing action on naming the field located at 25 Union Street until additional information was received related to the service of dispersing clerk second class Harold Cole. In advance of our August 4th meeting, we received additional information from Mayor Vigent and Marlboro Veterans Agent Michael Hennessy regarding Mr. Cole's service. After this information was shared with members of the Marlboro Veterans Community, we received two pieces of correspondence from members of the Marlboro Veterans Council, including Council President John Manning in support of naming the field. Counselor Pearlman made the following motion that was seconded by Counselor Oram, that we approve the, this portion of the order as submitted by the mayor, that the baseball field located at 25 Union Street in Marlboro be named in honor of dispersing clerk second class Harold Cole, who served in the Naval Reserve during World War II, and following honorable discharge later re-enlisted, and was killed in a plane crash while on active duty. That motion was carried 3 to 0. Mr. President, I will be asking for a suspension of the rules this evening, so that we can take action on this tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. On the motion to suspend the rules, to act on this tonight, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The rules are suspended. Counsel Navin?
I make a motion to approve that the baseball field located at 25 Union Street in Marlboro be named in honor of dispersing clerk second class Harold Cole, who served in the Naval Reserve during World War II, and following honorable discharge, later re-enlisted, and was killed in a plane crash while on active duty.
Motion made and seconded to name the field after Mr. Cole. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
And Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. Congratulations. The motion is approved to name the field after Mr. Cole, eleven in favor and none opposed. Are there any other reports of committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 29. Order Number 19-20-10781E, An Application for Special Permit by VD Naturals LLC, 505 Boston Post Road West, To Operate an Adult-Use Marijuana Facility. And the recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve as amended. Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would move to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor that includes the special permit language.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file Agenda Number 19, which has the language for the special permit. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Ossing?
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Oram?
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Tenara?
Counsel Tenara votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dussett?
Counsel Dussett votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir. The motion to accept and place on file the communication from the solicitor puts the special permit in proper format is, is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve the special permit.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the special permit. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to read the conditions, please. The city council pursuant to its authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, and the zoning ordinance of the city of Marlboro hereby grants the applicant a special permit to operate an adult-use marijuana retail establishment subject to the following conditions. Which condition shall be binding on the app, on the applicant, its successors and/or assigns? Number 1, construction in accordance with applicable laws. Construction is to be in accordance with the all applicable building codes and zoning regulations in effect on the city of Marlboro and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. 2, compliance with applicable laws. The applicant, its successors and/or assigns, agrees to comply with all municipal, state, and federal rules, regulations, and ordinances as they may apply to the construction, maintenance, and operation of the use. 3, site plan review. The issuance of the special permit is further subject to detailed site plan review in accordance with the city of Marlboro Site Plan Review Ordinance prior to the issuance of the building permit as required by Section 650-32E of the zoning ordinance. Any additional changes, alterations, modifications, or amendments as required during the process of site plan review shall be further conditions attached to the building permit, and no occupancy permit shall be issued until the applicant has complied with all conditions. Subsequent site plan review shall be consistent with the conditions of the special permit, and the plan submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city council as a special permit granting authority. 4, incorporation of submissions, all plans, photo rendering, site evaluations, briefs, and other documentation provided by the applicant as part of the application and as amended or revised during the application hearing process, before the city council, indoor city council's Urban Affairs Committee are herein incorporated into and become part of this special permit, and become conditions and requirements of the same unless otherwise altered by the city council. 5, compliance with state requirements. In accordance with Section 650, Section 1846C of the zoning ordinance, the use shall comply with all statutes and regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the licensure and operation of adult-use mari- marijuana retail establishment. 6, security. A, as shown on the plans, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall maintain a secure entrance lobby and waiting area providing a physical separation between the exterior door in the unit, of the unit, and the interior areas of the unit, where marijuana and marijuana-infused products are dispensed and sold, with security personnel available during operating hours to screen individuals arriving at the unit, to ensure that the interior areas of the unit are all, only accessible to persons over the age of 21, and to ensure that no individuals pose a direct threat to the health or safety of others. B, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall maintain a secure pickup, drop-off area for customers and products. C, the use shall have opaque exterior windows. D, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall maintain adequate staffing, so that customers may make purchases in an efficient manner to avoid queuing and impacts on neighboring uses. E, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall maintain surveillance cameras capable of 24-hour video recording, archiving, recordings, and the ability to immediately produce images in, on, around, or at the use. 7, processing and odors. There shall be no processing or manufacturing of marijuana or marijuana-infused products as part of the use. Marijuana and marijuana products shall be prepackaged and sealed prior to arriving at the site. Any odors associated with marijuana and marijuana-infused products shall be limited to the interior of the unit. There shall be no onsite consumption or use of marijuana or marijuana-infused products associated with the use. 8, hours. The maximum hours of operation of the use shall be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 9, contact information. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall provide current contact information of management and staff to the chief of police, the building commissioner, and the city council. 10, annual reports. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall submit to the city council the same annual reports. That must be provided to the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. 11, inspections and records. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall make the use available for regular inspections by city officials or their agents, and shall provide city officials or their agents with access to the same records, which are available for inspection to the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. 12, background checks. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall require that employees undergo a criminal background check, including without limitation to Corey and, and an additional background check by the chief of police, who shall have the authority to disapprove the employment of any person or persons as a result of said background check. 13, unrelated materials. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall make available for sale as part of the use any materials or items unrelated to the purchase, uh, purpose, purposes, excuse me, of licensure by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, including without limitation, tobacco products, clove cigarettes, or e-cigarettes. 14, police detail. The applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall employ a city of Marlboro police detail at the site during all operating hours for the first 60 days after the commencement of operations, unless the chief of police determines in a letter filed with the city council that a police detail is not necessary during certain times of the day. At the end of the 60-day period, if the chief of police determines in a letter filed with the city council that a police detail is still necessary during all operating hours or at certain times, then the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall continue to employ a city of Marlboro police detail until deemed unnecessary by the chief of police in a letter filed with the city council. In the event of a city of Marlboro police detail is not available when required, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall obtain a private detail. 15, boundary street entrance exit. Prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy for the use, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall have the vegetation located north of bound, of the boundary street entrance exit to the site trimmed to improve site distances for vehicles. 16, parking lot. Prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy for the use, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns, shall have the site parking lot restriped and a parking lot accessibility signage updated. In accordance with the zoning ordinance of the city, zoning ordinance, the city code, and state regulations, as part of the site plan and review process, the applicant shall shall review options to convert the former child play area at the site to additional parking spaces. Seventeen, Recording of Decision. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the applicant, its successors, and/or assigns at its expense shall record the special permit with the Middlesex County South Registry of Deeds and the city council, uh, excuse me, at its expense, uh, after the city clerk has certified that the 20-day period for appealing the special permit has elapsed with no appeal having been filed, and before the applicant has applied to the building commissioner for a building permit, upon recording, the applicant shall forthwith provide a copy of the recorded special permit to the city council office, the building department, and the city solicitor's office. No, thank you. Something holds strong.
Okay. Conditions have been read. Any, any further comments on the special permit? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the special permit for BD Naturals.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Perlman.
Counsel Perlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to approve the special permit is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number three.
Order Number 20-100-8043, Communication from Mayor Vigent regarding the proposed naming of the new elementary school located at 441 Bol- Bolton Street, the softball field located at 441 Bolton Street, and the baseball field located at 25 Union Street in honor of deceased veterans of the Civil War, the Vietnam War, and World War II. Recommendation of the Veterans Affairs Committee is to approve the naming of the new elementary school as amended, and the softball field located at 441 Bolton Street.
Mr. President.
Counsel Navin.
Move the recommendation to committee.
Motion's made and seconded to move the recommendation of the committee for the naming of the school and the field. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel, Counsel Landers.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we add to the name of the school, Elementary. So, it would be the Good Now Brothers Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you second on the motion? Counsel Dusset?
Second.
So, there is a second on the motion? Motion's been made and seconded. Counsel Dusset.
I was gonna second it.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to amend the naming of the school to add the word "elementary" after the word "brothers." So, we'd read Good Now Brothers Elementary School. Discussion on the motion? Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, while I appreciate the effort to clarify that this is an elementary school, I don't think us voting to have it so is necessary. Um, all of the schools will have a sign, this, the new school will have a sign that clarifies that it's an elementary school. We submitted money for the SBA for an elementary school. The teachers are all certified to be elementary school teachers. It's clear that it is an elementary school. I think what's important for us is the name of the school. Um, its grade level is really not important in the naming, so I would suggest that it's not necessary, and I would urge people to not support the amendment and to just vote the original name. And I'm going to bet that even though we haven't added it in, it will be on the signage, it will be on the letterhead, and, um, also that when you ask a child what school they go to, they will simply tell you that they go to the Good Now School. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, I think that the, um, clarification is important for the letterhead as well as the signage of the school. My daughter went to the Kane School. Officially, it's known as the Frances, Frances J. Kane Elementary School. So, there is a difference to it. The children know it one way, there's the official name. I think having the, you know, the elementary school as part of it is an important part of the name. So, that, just wanna provide a count of you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Are there any other counselors with comment? Counsel Landers.
And I will be brief, Mr. President. It's just, you know, I guess, part of me, you know, being educated for over 35 years, i- it is important that, you know, that elementary, that level is included. And this is our opportunity to do it right. If that's, if that's what it's gonna be, let's call what it is. It's an elementary school, just like the high school. We don't leave the name, you know, out of the high school, or the middle school, or, you know, of the three other elementary schools. I think that's the other thing. Let's be consistent. The other three elementary schools do have elementary in their name. It's on their building. I had photos last week that showed that. So, that's why I'm making the amendment to, let's do it right this time. Uh, and, uh, so I think personally, the Good Now Brothers Elementary School is the proper name for that $56 million school. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, on the amendment to add the word "elementary" so that it would read the Good Now Brothers Elementary School. Everybody clear on what you're voting on? This is just the amendment to add the word "elementary." I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Tenera.[1573.01]